Hi Hector.
Hi Jordan. Can you hear me? Okay, great. It says I'm muted.
I can hear you clearly. Remember, I'm Mark. You may be our only show.
I heard this was where the party was.
Well, I think it's a belated birthday party, I hear actually.
HIPAA.
Are you guys getting tons of snow right now?
Yes. Yeah. And I was like, thank goodness it's a Zoom meeting. I don't know if it's supposed to be so snowing here tomorrow as well.
We'll see what happens overnight. It's pretty wet out. Despite the snow. Jordan, I'm here. I'm just feeding my dog really quickly so she won't throw a fit.
Good call.
And Chair Earsquad, just FYI, Nicole Greider contacted me. She is not able to attend tonight. And remember, Pestejo will be late.
Okay. So that's uh, the gang's all here then. So let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, uh, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at uh, six PM. I'm sorry, of the Town Urban Renewal Agency's regular meeting. Go call please.
Board member Purnamrath.
Here.
Board member Byers.
Here.
Board member Parimal.
Here.
Board member Byers. Board member Clark.
Here.
And uh, Chair Earsquad.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. Uh, next item on the agenda is executive session. Uh, board will meet in an executive session. Uh, let's see, the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Town will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero two E as in Edward, to conduct deliberations with a person designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and design uh, designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience will not be included. Uh, representatives of the media uh, are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. If you are a representative of the news media who would like to attend the session, please raise your hand now. Uh, no decisions will be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session. Are we going to another link?
Yes. So mayor, I will be sending out to all council members in a separate link for the executive session. Um, so please click on that for the audience members here tonight. Go ahead and stay logged onto this link. Hector will hang out with you and we will return to this link when we're done. And I also say let's uh, recognize that member Pestejo is present as well.
Thank you. Uh, so we're gonna leave this link for another. Is that correct?
Yes, and it will be in your email inbox within seconds.
We have everybody, two, three, four.
Yeah, one second here.
Oh, there she is. Three. Four, five.
Apologies about that chair. We have competing meetings in the household tonight.
All right, everybody. We're back in, in regular session. There was no decisions made, nothing to report. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is. We've reconvened. That was item three. Item four is speakers heard on non-agenda item. Are there any speaker request forms?
We do not, we do not have any currently submitted.
He raised hands in the attendees. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed. Item number five is the consent calendar. Has everybody had a chance to review the financial packet for January twenty twenty-three? Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Perry, member Perry Miller.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Board member Pranam Ross.
Yes.
Board member Pesezo.
Yes.
Board member Byers. Board member Parry Miller.
I'm, I'm sorry, I want to go back. Um, yes, my vote is yes. My computer froze.
Thank you, Board Member Myers. Board Member Parry Miller.
Yes.
Board Member Clark.
Yes.
A motion passes.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is item six point one, resolution twenty twenty-three. Is it? Is there a resolution number yet?
Zero, one.
Okay, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one, appointing a budget officer for fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four. Staff report?
Yes, so per the agency bylaws, the executive director does serve as the budget officer. And so this resolution just really formally kicks off our budgeting process for this year. To give you a quick recap. The budget committee for this agency is the same budget committee for the city of Talent. So what we'll be doing this year is we'll be holding concurrent meetings with them. So that the committee will review both the Tura budget as well as the city's budget. And then the approved budget will come before you all as a board in early June. And that will be the process for this year. But this resolution itself specifically only appoints me as executive director as the formal budget officer.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Member Perry Miller.
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one, appointing executive director Brooklyn as the budget officer for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one, appointing executive director as the budget officer for fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Board member Pranam Ross.
Yes.
Board member Pesezo.
Yes.
Board member Byers.
Yes.
Board member Parry Miller.
Yes.
And Board Member Clark.
Yes.
Thank you, Hector. Item six point two is update on the Gateway Transitional Housing Program. Steph?
Great, thank you Chair. So as of February twenty-second, we have taken on full ownership of the travel trailers that are located at the Gateway site. The next up for us in this process is we are submitting the certificates of Oregon, of origin, pardon me, for titling and registration at the DMV. At the same time, I'm preparing a preliminary draft plan for the disposition of the trailers. That is what we will do with the trailers. When the program is finished up. And this also meant to OHCS for us to start the conversation around what happens to the trailers when the program is over. Um, the other big update for the Gateway Transitional Housing Program is that Access is currently taking over the program management. They are working with Rogue Retreat right now to get all of the current residents to sign new lease agreements. And then this past Saturday, Access Rogue Retreat, Rogue Action Center, Rogue Food Unites and our agency, we held an open house at the Gateway site on Saturday, March eleventh, um, to meet the residents and introduce Access staff. Um, it was a gorgeous day for that event, went really well. And then the other news to share is that Access has hired an onsite manager who is bilingual, which is great, and they will begin living onsite later this spring. Um, so the transition is actively occurring and, um, things are going well and the garden boxes are getting put in as well.
That's very exciting, and I understand from our, uh, uh, from our recent, uh, discussion that the onsite managers also have some medical training or, uh, something.
Not medical training, but they're a professional community health advocate.
Yeah, great, great. Very helpful. Well, is there any, are there any questions or comments? Thank you, Jordan, for doing such a great job with this, this incredibly, uh, stressful transition, but, um, you know, in the end Rogue Action, or excuse me, Rogue Retreat landed on their feet under really great leadership. Um, this transition over to Access is probably going to make more sense in the long run. And, um, I do have a question. Have we been, um, we're being compensated to administrate the, the transfer of, of titles, correct? Is that, is that still the case?
We are not being compensated, but we are being reimbursed. So all the titling and registering costs as well as the insurance costs through June thirtieth are reimbursed by OHCS.
Perfect, great, all right. And, uh, one last question, um, are, uh, are we beginning to see folks being uh, settled and, um, and, and if so, what is, uh, what's the status, the current status of occupancy on the, on the site?
So my, the last number updates I've had is that over seventeen families have been placed in permanent housing, which is great. And that they are currently, um, putting new folks in the trailers. And so right now we have full or close to full occupancy on the site. Access is very excited because in the next fourteen months, we have a lot of affordable housing that'll come open and ready for folks to live in, including Renaissance Flats in Talent, Royal Oaks over in Phoenix, and there's some more housing developments, including Jackson County Housing Authority and Age Plus that expect to break ground in twenty twenty-three as well. Um, so they expect the transitions to start happening much more often, much more quickly in, within this next fourteen month period.
That's great, and we're still, um, prioritizing families with school district that are fire survivors, correct? And there's no other, I mean, uh, there's no other, um, type, uh, types of, um, families coming. There's outside of fire survivors. That's, that's what it's limited to, correct?
Correct. Um, so a big difference between when Rogue Retreat was property manager and Access is Access is limited to only fire survivors going into the site. Um, both per the grant agreement they have with the state as well as the grant or the lease agreement they have with us.
Great. Yeah, I really appreciate you cleaning up the language in the lease agreement, uh, on that, because it, it was really the original intention and, and appreciate Rogue Retreat's mission, but, uh, our focus is, is on fire survivors. So thank you for that. All right, uh, any other comments or questions? Great. Uh, thank you, Jordan. Item six point three, discussion on gateway site permanent development approach. Steph?
Yes, absolutely. So the city, or sorry, the agency is working with Tom Humphrey. We have contacted with him to help us develop an RFP for the permanent development of the gateway site. Um, I reached out to Tom too late to get him to present his report at tonight's meeting, but he will be coming to our April meeting to share more details with you all. So I just wanted to give you all a high, high summary of what actions Tom has taken so far and kind of what the next course is um, before he comes to us, um, to present in April. Me. So Tom did a deep dive into the various concept designs and community notes that occurred both pre-fire and post-fire um, for the community vision for that site. Within that, he identified the key concepts that he saw in that, including, um, culturally centered community building within it, affordable housing, a lot of flexible, expandable housing and mixed use development. He's then been doing research into developments that have happened in other communities in Oregon, California, and Washington to find examples of developers who built something that fits that community vision. And then he is reaching out to those developers to see if, A, they'd have any interest in coming to Talent to, to develop, or if they could offer any feedback or insight about how we could craft the RFP, um, just assist developers in helping, um, manifest the community vision that's there for the site. So he and I have met with Bridge Housing. They developed a, some affordable housing that was incorporated with the community library, so the library on the bottom and housing on top um, in Cornelius, Oregon. And they have in turn now connected with Bienna Star and Hacienda CDC up in Portland is our next step to talking with other developers. Um, folks have been super helpful and more than willing to offer help, um, in RFP development. So this is at the stage we're currently at, is where Tom is reaching out to various developers to get their feedback. And I would say specific developers to affordable housing and to some more Spanish specific and Latino specific community building.
Thank you, Jordan. Uh, member Clark?
Yeah, I don't, uh, mean to assume that the list of, uh, developers there is intended to be, um, complete, but, um, uh, sometime in the pre-fire era, we, uh, heard from, um, uh, Neighbor Works Umpqua. And they, uh, expressed interest in, in, um, I think it was after the previous RFP had gone out and they weren't aware of it actually, um, is what they said and, and, but then sometime later they expressed interest in it and, and, um, gave us a, some kind of a presentation, uh, to that effect. Um, and then another group that, um, that some of us have had a conversation with is, uh, Northwest Housing Alternatives. Um, also expressed interest in, in the work and we're doing and the mission, um, and our values. So just thought I'd throw those out, those names out there.
Great, thank you. I'm drawing them down to share with Tom tomorrow. Those are great thoughts.
Yeah, Jordan, I, I, it might be worth mentioning that, uh, Neighbor Works, um, uh, has a kind of a breadth of, of projects that they've done that include mixed use, um, which is one of the, you know, which was one of the real, uh, strengths in their presentation was that they're able to, uh, they're able to do the whole project, um, at least at that point in time. I know that conditions have changed quite a bit since then, and I don't know what they're doing now, but, but at that point in time, they were, uh, they were interested in the entire project. Um, so, um, great group.
Great, appreciate that suggestion.
Any other comments or questions? All right, I just have one comment and then it's, uh, it's a real boon that you were able to get Tom Humphrey, uh, to join us on this great project. And, uh, in my mind, he's the greatest planner in the Rogue Valley and, um, I am just, uh, next to our own, of course. Um, I am just super stoked, uh, to have him joining your team and, and on this particular project. And I appreciate, uh, also, uh, the key concepts that you identified. Uh, it shows that you have a handle on this and we're really grateful for that. Um, all right, um, the next item on the agenda is item seven point one, appointment of board chair and vice chair. Steph?
So per article two of the bylaws, um, the agency does need to appoint a chair and a vice chair every calendar year. I apologize, I did miss this administrative task for our meeting in January. We didn't have a regular meeting in February, so the opportunity is coming before you all um, today to formally appoint, uh, who will hold the chair and vice chair position for this current calendar year.
And I want to point out before we do this, that, um, that this appointment, um, that, th- these appointments are for the current urban renewal agency only and, and I think that's really important. Um, some, uh, we have audience members and I don't want any uh, misunderstanding or misinformation, uh, to, to go out. So this is, this is an appointment that is only for the current urban renewal, which is currently working on its last project with, at the gateway. So, um, uh, that, that, that's all I have to add. Thank you, Jordan. Uh, thank you for the staff report. So with that, we'll go ahead and take nominations for the chair position. Counselor Clark?
As I nominate Mayor Ayers Flood to service chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, or excuse me, are there any other nominations? Uh, without any other nominations, we'll accept that as a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Pranam Ross?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, let you know, Chair, that I'm so grateful for your leadership. Um, I know it hasn't always been easy, um, but I, I think we've all profited from your decades of experience, uh, from your passion for good process and for your ability to run a meeting that is efficient and professional, and yet also very welcoming and inclusive. So I'm really happy to be able to second that motion.
Thank you so much. Are there any other deliberation? Uh, Counselor Clark?
We're just gonna say that, um, uh, say that I reaffirm everything that Counselor Pranam Ross just said, and she said it so well, I won't, uh, I won't attempt to restate it, but, um, she is exactly correct.
Thank you. Thank you. That's really gratifying to hear. Any other deliberation? All right, uh, roll call, please.
Board member Pranam Ross.
Yes.
Board member Pesezo.
Yes.
Board member Byers.
Yes.
Board member Parry Miller.
Yes.
And Board Member Clark.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Hector. Uh, at this time, we'll take nominations for the vice chair position. Member Clark?
Yes, I nominate Board Member Parry Miller as vice chair.
Second.
Uh, it's the, it's the dueling seconds all night long. You both, uh, you both seconded the last one as well. Um, so we have, we have a second. Um, I'll leave it to the recorder to choose which one. Um, so we have a motion and a second, uh, to appoint member Perry Miller to the vice chair. Is there any discussion? Uh, member Clark?
Yeah, um, uh, Board Member Parry Miller is, uh, an excellent, uh, member of the board and city council, and I really appreciate conferring with her on issues and Board member Parry Miller is an excellent member of the board and city council, and I really appreciate conferring with her on issues and appreciate her. Clear and thoughtful analysis in matters, and I look forward to her serving the board in this role.
Member Penomarif.
Yeah, I, I echo those sentiments. I also want to say I, I really appreciate and envy. Counselor Parry Miller's ability to really focus on a lot of details at once. She does provide tremendous analysis and also over the last couple of years. Her dedication to, to the welfare of folks on, on the gateway has been very inspiring to me. So I'm, I'm happy to vote for her as, as vice chair.
Member Perry Miller.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that I accept the nomination and I'm very touched by all the kind words. And if I am elected, I know I have some very big shoes to fill. And so I'll be leaning on member Clark through that.
Yeah, I, if there, are there any further nominations? Without any further nominations, I'll accept that as a motion and a second. And I would just like to add that. That. One of the greatest things that I value, have valued over the course of the past couple of years with vice chair. Jason is that he's been very reliable, dependable, and a great thought partner, and I just so have appreciated that, and I, I really see that as. Another really great opportunity in member Perry Miller. So if the vote were to split, I would definitely support this motion. I don't see that happening. I don't get to vote very often, but, but when I do, if I, if I was able to here, I would definitely support this, this great nomination. Any further discussion? Member Penomarif.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Counselor Clark as well for his, member Clark, for his wonderful service and also. One of the things I admire and envy about him is, is the ability to find the right, right words for the occasion. And they've been really challenging and eventful occasions we faced. So thank you. Thank you for your leadership, Council, member Clark.
Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Board member Pranam Ross.
Yes.
Board member Pesezo.
Yes.
Board member Byers.
Yes.
Board member Parry Miller.
Yes.
And board member Clark.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Hector. I just can't leave this moment without expressing my gratitude for this really. Respectful and, you know, mutual admiration in this group of people. We don't always agree. But we have a great ability to respectfully disagree and admire each other on the other side, and I'm very thankful to be working with everybody. And great staff as well, Jordan. This is really, this is a really great time in this, in service to the city. All right, with that, let's go ahead and move on to written communications. There are none. Do you have anything for the good of the order before I adjourn anybody? All right, so with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at. 6:52. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, all.